An application by Kerry Hendricks for attractive land, as Mayor mentioned, which is located in the CBD downtown Mixhues zoning district. The ULDO requires a special use permit to operate an auto body repair shop in the CBD. The current owner also owns an adjacent parking lot for Old School Parking located at 132 North Seventh Street, which is right next door here to the south. There is currently a two-hour parking limit on Jackson Avenue. Auto service repair. We're permitted in commercial districts. All repair activities including oil drainage, lifts, and other equipment must take place within a completely enclosed building. Outdoor storage is permitted only where incidental to auto repair and body repair provided that such storage is completely screened so as not to be visible from residential areas or public rights away. Screening is subject to provisions of Article 33. Any spray painting must take place within a structure designed for that purpose and be approved by the building official. Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 8, 2019, and recommended approval of a three-year conditional use permit, which the applicant was in agreement to, and recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Ed, will this meet all NFPA requirements, the fire marshal requirements for a clean?
They're planning on spraying them the whole building.
It will be sprayed. Is there a requirement for the blow? And hazardous chemicals as far as any?
Yes, there are.
And it will be all NFPA?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so as you know, there is a public comment portion of this public hearing. If anyone in the public wish to comment on item number 12. Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return it back to the council for any questions or comments. If not, entertain a motion. A motion, uh...
Right, and just to approve?
Yeah, do approve.
Oh, do approve, sorry.
No, here's... Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Item thirteen is also a public hearing. This is consideration of a special use permit to operate a secondary educational facility at 2401 Carroll K Boulevard, Lot 1 Middle School Edition, if Atkins Otten was here.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, special use permit by Stewart School District to operate a secondary middle school educational facility. This matter is a housecleaning issue to rectify previous issues discovered during recent residential planning and development in the area. The middle school was built in 2011, and at the time, the zoning was changed from R1 to R4 with the reasoning that a secondary educational facility required a special use permit in R1 and to avoid the application process of a special use permit, when in reality, the application process and timeline to rezone the property versus a special use permit are the same. In 2015, the city conducted an official citywide zoning map update, which inadvertently rezoned the subject property back to R1, which it originally was. In order to move forward with developing the area, it would be beneficial to have the R1 zoning instead of the R4 because the R4 designation would allow multifamily apartment complexes outright with little to no regulations to prevent it. Multifamily apartments are needed in Seward, however, they should be located and adjacent to more densely zoned districts, not adjacent to R1 and R2. City staff discussed this matter with Stewart School District Superintendent Dr. Fields, who indicated that he concurs. Planning Commission met April 8, 2019, and conducted the public hearing, recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ed. This is a public hearing, and so will the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone in the public would wish to comment on this item, please approach the podium at its time. Welcome.
Josh Fields, 429 East Pinewood Avenue. We're already there, so that's always kind of an interesting piece, but it is a cleanup piece. The... We did approve this at a board meeting when Greg and Ed were able to come, and so it was approved, that R1 special use permit. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Do you know where you'll move if this is not approved?
Where do you live at, Joshua?
For her on the corner from you. Any question or comments from the council? Or does he need a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
Leave a motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Leave a motion and a second. Is it to approve this special use permit? Any further discussion? Seeing none, do you register your votes? Please display the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Alright, thank you. Item fourteen, public hearing as well, consideration of an ordinance amending the official public... The official zoning map of the city of Seward. Ed?
Alright, this is another matter is a housecleaning issue to rectify issues discovered with the city zoning map. As mentioned, the city last adopted an official citywide zoning map in 2015 with ordinance City staff researched past planning commission, city council agendas, minutes, and ordinances for all previous zoning amendments back to 1999 and created a list of zoning amendments, which was included in the packet. City staff then compared the list of zoning amendments to the city zoning map at the time and made multiple corrections and edits. The list of amendments contains an asterisk on the zoning changes that were not reflected in the city's current zoning map. City staff have communicated with the city's GIS internet provider, GIS workshop, and now have the tools to make future amendments and changes in a timely manner to the city's zoning map with any future zoning amendments. Planning Commission held a public hearing April 8, 2019, which they tabled this item due to a concern about the zoning, about zoning the school district area R1. Since the comprehensive plan, future land use map indicates that directly across the street from the Stewart Middle School, north side of Waverly Road, it indicates future high-density residential, which is typically your R4. Planning Commission wanted to get the school district's input about possibly rezoning their area to R2 to try and make it a little more compatible with the future land use map indication of high-density residential in the future across the street.
So where does that leave us at this point?
I believe Planning Commission has to make some kind of recommendation to council before any action can be taken. Kelly, if that's right?
Moved.
Well, we should discuss.
I think we should discuss and finish the public hearing so we've completed that portion of it.
So this is a public hearing, so I'll go over the public comment portion of the public hearing first. If anyone in the public wish to comment on item number 14. Seeing no one, then I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item 14. Greg?
Just to continue to direct some traffic on this one, what instituted this was, if you remember back, the Shoal Creek development. When we were trying to sort through that one, and we said, after we recognized there were all these issues with that map, Ed was tasked with going back through and developing this, working his way through it backwards. And the three elements we talked about were the first step was to zone Shoal Creek, and you guys made that decision back when you approved that development last spring as R3. Then we said we would sort out the zoning with the school because there was the R1 versus R4. The school district recommended they would prefer R1. We'd also heard from the community surrounding that they wanted R1. And then the final element of that Shoal Creek issue, along with a few other ones that Ed has caught and amended and worked through on the, on the map, was the neighborhood. There was also some confusion and mix-up in regards to the neighborhood surrounding the middle school. And so all of that is cleaned up. This is the third tier of that cleanup, along with a lot of other legwork that Ed did in putting this information together. Tonight, we can talk about any of the other areas or elements, continue to look at the zoning map, compare it to the future land use map that you approved in the comprehensive plan we recently adopted, and then it would be appropriate to table the item until you receive recommendation by planning and zoning.
I have a future land use map up, which shows the middle school area right here as a civic, civic area. And as mentioned, the future land use map indicates high-density residential there across the street. Transition zoning is what we tried to, to plan by, and this transitions from Highway 15, uh, urban, U-M-U...
Mixed use.
Mixed use to mixed density residential, mixed density residential to high-density residential from west to east. So here's where the planning commission had a concern with high density residential being across from the civic area which we're proposing to zone to R1, which is already R1 from 2015. I also have the zoning map. If anyone has any questions on the future land use map?
You know, isn't it more of a concern and a transition when you're actually talking housing to housing? The fact that we got high-density residential across the street from public use essentially, uh, school and down to the right, obviously, the park and the ball fields. I mean, we're not transitioning from, uh, you know, the $300,000 home to an apartment building across the street. It's, it's public use. It's a school.
Yep.
So I don't see where that should create a concern. That's just my opinion.
Chris, what do you think about moving HGR, the high density, up over on top a little bit above the, um, mixed use, the pink, in some way? That would put it closer to where it should, I think it should be, but I mean, we have to do something else with the park, but...
And I would just interject because I think both of you were involved in the comprehensive plan work sessions.
Yeah, and I, 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 we talked about that.
Yeah. And the hard part of that is those areas are reserved because we don't plan in the lifespan of this current comprehensive plan to get into that area. And so the area we need to discuss is what to do with that high-density residential. Again, if you just waved yourself across, uh, from where Ed is at with the cursor on that civic, where the middle school it is, you're gonna go through an area of R1, correct, Ed?
Yep.
Through all that yellow residential, then you're gonna hit the cemetery, which actually does have a, I don't know what the zoning is over there, but I think it is...
It's high density.
It is. They're very dense. We really pack them in. So you're gonna see, there's R1, R2, and then R4 where the cemetery is. The cemetery actually straddles R4 and R2. And then we have R4 down at the bottom, right next to R1. Transitional zoning is the goal, but it is not perfect, and that is what I stated to the planning commission and what, and just as Councilman Schmidt stated and Ed pointed out, we were really talking about the transitional element of it being north of Waverly Road as you come from the corridor of commercial by the highway and moving yourself off towards the, um, towards the east. The hard part being this R1 on the south, where you actually have the residence, that one gap north of Star Street in there, that really is our highest point of R1 residential that we have to kind of not, the one thing we don't want to do is put that high density right on top of that. That would probably be the biggest... But Waverly Road's gonna be a major thoroughfare, a wide roadway, lit, it's got a bike trail on it, there's gonna be a lot of separation. And so I think by all intents and purposes, we're just going through the motions by changing the density or the R1 to R2, but it was something that was very important to a number of members on the planning commission. We did reach out to Dr. Fields and the school district and talked to them briefly. I spoke with them. I don't know how receptive they are. The other concern is there's also a private residence up there that's surrounded by this that also would be zoned R1, and they can't change that zoning on their own accord. So we would still have this little island of R1 unless that one also came in and changed it, or we forced it.
Is that still a private lot?
Yes.
Not part of the school?
Nope. There is a residence on there.
Well, I know it's there, I just...
And it is being occupied.
Yep, she lives there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And so that was my other concern is that we may end up with an island of around, of R2 around this R1 that's still adjacent to that high density. I think we just need to understand that by having proper barriers and the bike trail, the roadway, the lighting and the setbacks and everything that's involved with a right-of-way that large, that that is your buffer and that I don't think it's inappropriate to have the zoning adjacent to high density. That will have to come from the recommendation of planning and zoning commission and then ultimately the determination of this body.
How many years out do you think we are from going north of Waverly Road?
Jake?
What?
Oh, you were listening, gotcha. How soon might we go across Waverly Road and see development? Jonathan's just watching me random numbers here.
I mean, no, if we look at the last five years of growth, 26 and a half homes, we have 143 lots, I mean, just do the math. It's about 30 homes a year, and I actually think we're probably gonna see a little bit of an uptick.
Yeah, and agreeing. And it also depends on what, again, if that's high-density residential, we don't have that right now. And so if that is developed in the way it's identified in the comp plan, you may see an entrepreneurial builder come in and go, "I'll build you a high residential, I'll build you a multifamily unit up there." It just, just depends. The same thing with that mixed-use corner by the highway. That may, there's just no commercial up on the northern end of town now, and when that's available, somebody may jump on that.
In Waverly Road again on our...
Next year.
It's next year.
Next summer.
Let's start doing next year.
And then the trail to follow the year after, maybe.
I know when we looked through the comprehensive plan, a high-density residential doesn't necessarily mean apartments. I mean, they were, they were very clear, like, all these options that I think if people thought about other options beyond, you know, apartment buildings, they might be more comfortable.
Again, this is a guideline. You don't, it's not meant to be followed as like a zoning map, and we have not zoned this area yet, north of Waverly Road. It's supposed to be a guide to give you some information about filling in the kind of needs and wants that we have, but it's not supposed to be held strictly as, well, this is basically your zoning map. So, and that's exactly how Amy and RGG explained it to both the working groups and also the planning and zoning commission in this body.
Well, I have the zoning map. If anybody wants to look at any specific area, I can zoom in anywhere you'd like.
There was a lot of discussion about the property commonly referred to as a lidner property or just southern Seward because of its, still remains under its current zoning, industrial surrounding an I1 residential area, or an R1 residential area, so...
And there has been some interest in that area.
So this will continue to be something that we need to address as we plan and work through potential sales of this property or uses by the developers that are interested in it.
And buffer and protect that existing R1 residential neighborhood.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments or discussion?
So we have to wait for the planning commission's recommendation?
Yeah, I think if you're ready, I would probably ask for a motion. Are you ready?
Second.
Motion to table for the second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
I will need, though, for the previous ordinances, one final motion to make those ordinances a part of the permanent record.
So, second.
Motion and second. Do you register your votes? Please play the...
Yeah.
Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Alright. Item 15, confirmation of mayor's appointments of various boards and committees. A, is the reappointment of Scott Slope to the Community Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term.
Approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Item B, reappointment of Jim Plaki to the Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term.
Approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Item C, reappointment of Chocolate Tira to the planning commission for a three-year term.
Approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Item 16, consideration of an amendment to the agreement with Schemmer Associates and Corporations in the Waverly Road Improvement Project. Jake, what's going on?
Alright, so the Waverly Road Improvement Project is essentially 90% done. I expect final plans to be here within the next couple of weeks. The amendment to the contract is to add some additional services. This is something that Schemmer had mentioned to me would be forthcoming. Considering the extended length of this project, I think they initially indicated that they planned to have design done in 2018, but we're halfway through, it's 2019, we're still working on some things. Some of that has to do with the just extended and additional project management that's needed, additional, um, time at, uh, just progress meetings and things like that, that they've had to come out here and check in and, um, talk to me about where they're at on things. Some of that is redesign. Initially, the design of the roadway was 40 feet. After consideration, I considered, um, just narrowing it up to 38. There's, um, some other minor redesign, um, that I thought was adequate and needed for the project, and it were far enough along that, uh, there are some additional services needed for that. But we're saving quite a bit of money with some of the redesign, just based on just less needed material and less construction costs that we'll save in the backend. Uh, as far as the schedule on the project, I mentioned that, uh, we are planning construction next year. Plans will be done, as I indicated, in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll move to right-of-way acquisition. There is only a couple of areas where we will need right-of-way, so I don't think that will take very long. I think I indicated this previously, the county does intend to build their project along with our project. Their project is, um, next, I believe it's half mile, uh, east of where our project ends at essentially the, the bridge over Plum Creek. So the hope is to get their project and our project done at the same time all next year. That will be a challenge. I, I think we should entertain a, an agreement with the county to have these projects bid as one whole project, so we have one contractor on board, uh, to do the entire project. And so phasing works out, um, and things like that. There's, there's only one hiccup that, one thing I want to check before we move forward too far with that, and is, and that is really just seeing if contractors, um, can get all that work done in one, uh, construction season. If they can't or think that's not reasonable, uh, then I would look at the other option of bidding them separate, so we have two separate crews that can get them both done in the same season if we have two separate contractors.
What's the scope of the county project, Jake?
Uh, it's basically just, just paving that road.
Is there any fresh work?
There is some guard rail update, but no actual update to the superstructure or some sort of bridge. So basically, just, just surface work for them. Uh, no real drainage structures for their project. Their project estimated cost is around 800,000, some thousand, they've had that budget. Uh, so, uh, I think they're, they're kinda, well, I talked with Casey, he indicated that you would be fine with us doing an interlocal agreement and just kind of managing the project all as, as one, as, uh, you know, as one whole project rather than two projects and we're constantly trying to, uh, you know, coordinate phasing and coordinate construction efforts, so...
Yes, Greg?
I would just note the other issue that may be an issue for the county is we haven't talked to Casey, we don't have full assessment of his costs associated with the flood event. They may have incurred enough cost that they may be moving around their budget for upcoming years. I don't know. So I just want to keep that, because they're still not doing assessment. Last we had talked to Casey, they had 100 roads still closed.
Yeah, and I think, uh, so that should push their project back. I think we still move forward with our project, get our section done, and then possibly the next year or farther down the line, they would get their project up separately, so...
That was just an unknown in the county's budget. They'll have to sort out.
Thanks, Jake. Any questions or comments from the council? Any motion that you approve?
Approve the item?
Your motion and a second. Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
Yep, we're not doing it.
Okay. So we'll move on to item 18, which is consideration of changes to the Stewart Cemetery Rules and Regulations and Fee Changes.
Right, do you want to go out and talk about that? Bob's not with us tonight.
Good evening, I'm Brent Peterson, Assistant Partner. The changes we want to make are, uh, the scattering ashes will be permitted in the designated area, and that's fourth edition of the cemetery, and it has to be overseen by the supervisor of the cemetery. And also, um, we need to look at the, the fees, uh, be assessed for entering a name into the city's cemetery records in the following situations, regardless of the existing monument, uh, no first burial, or no burial of ashes. Can I explain that stuff further?
I think essentially it is, we have some where people want to just put a monument out there, and there is nobody located there in one form or the other. Correct?
That's correct. And if they want their, if they want to come and scatter ashes in fourth edition and want their name in the record, they have to pay the $75 fee to get that put in the record.
There's also a few changes to the veterans section.
Okay.
And if it's on the flip side of your page there...
Okay. Um, and they want to do the bases, um, for to put the monuments on, they want to make those larger, um, so that when they mow, there's not the gap in between the thing that usually ends up being weeds or you have to trim them. They'll, the foundation will be from pin to pin with no gap in the middle, and so that there won't be little spaces in between that you have to weed with all those areas. It'll be easier to mow, and the foundation will also be, uh, a little wider so that, because a lot of people like to put little, um, mementos and stuff like that out there of their loved ones, and it's just easier to have more space for them to put, so it's easier to mow and trim around those.
Any questions or comments from the council? Do you have a resolution? This is a consideration, do we, do we want to do this, is this the same thing, right? Is it just a resolution, do you have to do a motion and a resolution?
Well, they're actually changing the rules and regs.
Yeah.
And then a fee resolution.
Okay, so for 18, the, the first part would be consideration of changes to the Stewart Cemetery Rules and Regulations and Fee Changes. Is that just...
Just the rules and regs.
Yeah.
Okay. Your motion is your second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
And then I need someone to introduce a resolution adding fees charged at the Stewart Cemetery's for scattering of ashes and entering deceased names into cemetery records.
I'm gonna do this resolution.
Alright. Uh, the resolution has been introduced and it's designated as Resolution Number 2019-09. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So...
Second. Your motion and a second. Do you register your votes? Please play the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Coleman, Miller, Schmitt, Henry, sixteen.
And next we have item 19, Statement Report.
Yes, uh, just a few highlights. We continue to work through the flood damage process. Ed and myself attended the NEMA Flood Damage Public Assistance Presentation and got a lot of information on how we, uh, continued through that process. We did have representatives from FEMA stop out and meet with Jake. We did have representatives from FEMA stop out and meet with Jake. And they went out and actively reviewed some of our damage areas, uh, trail bridges. The bridge on Hillcrest was one they specifically took a lot of time looking at. He also took them down and they met with Ron Hurley and the fair board. I think they also went out and met with Casey and the county separate from us. But we made sure we made those connections and we'll work through the process of, uh, getting those projects taken care of. I think some of those bridges are gonna be our big projects, the washout that happened on the farm levee to the south of the river. And then we need to finalize and continue our debris cleanup on the levee over by the fair, Independence Landing. There's a lot of cornstalks that we need to get off the levee in short order so that we don't kill all the grass off completely and then end up.
How do you get that off of there? Do you just break it up?
Uh, what Bob and Mel have done in the past, and what they'll do is go up with a track loader or bobcat with tracks on it, and then they'll put the bucket down and they'll just slowly scrape it down. Otherwise, we gotta take rakes out there or a disc or something and pull it off. And so that's how they've, so they've done it in the past, is they'll just scrape down into piles and then come in with the actual loader, load it up in the bucket and take them out. We also are gonna assist the fair in acquiring back their large commercial trash cans that are laying on our levee, because we don't think they have equipment to lift those. And so we'll take the loader down there, put it in the bucket of the loader, and haul it back to the fairgrounds for them. So that was, uh, Jake and I walked the levee multiple times that day, uh, and did a full analysis now that the water's all the way down. And looked for anything that we needed to talk to Michael Bash about, leads us into another one. Uh, we received the levee accreditation initial draft study. We took that and presented it to the Upper Big Blue River N R D. Answered questions about the study and flooding event for them in that presentation. And basically noted that that study and discussion of what to do there afterwards will come to the council in May. So Michael will be on hand to present that to you. And then based on your decision-making after that, that will give us an idea of whether we want to pursue capital projects to make some updates and just fix a few, uh, things on the levee that may be identified as areas of concern. Overall, good, good bill of health, and we saw it, it held up, obviously to, you know, the biggest flood we've ever had on the Big Blue River as it measured at the bridge at least. And so after we get that information and feedback from you, then we may go back to the N R D again and look at partnering on some capital improvements to that facility. And we let them know that that was gonna be a process. The last one I have is Jake, myself, and Tim Richdig, met with Olson and, and their engineering team to go over the draft of changes for the wastewater treatment plants feature. For the master plan for just that facility. And so we've gotten some different, it'll be probably in May or early June, I think. We're thinking in early June that they'll be on hand to come present that master plan to you and then show you some of the options that they came up with. And then start looking at the long-term outlook for, um, the wastewater treatment plant. But overall, that plan looks really good. There's some interesting concepts that they came up with and phasing that they'll be able to do because of our land holdings adjacent to it. And so they'll give you a few options that you can work through and think about, um, and then we'll go from there. Uh, one other one that probably plays into kind of all of these things, but, uh, we were noted, Ed and myself, uh, and we met with our team here at the city on hazard mitigation. There's gonna be a substantial amount of money available for hazard mitigation due to this flood, uh, event. And the way they quantify that is what the damages are, it's a percentage of that, you also get federal dollars to use for hazard mitigation. NEMA and Gary Peterson, our local hazard, uh, mitigation, our, our emergency manager, said be really creative this time, because that is federal dollars that tends in Nebraska to just be left on the table. And no one comes up with anything. And so we had all our utilities and guys all get together and start planning different projects that we can do. One that we want to consider that you've done a lot in the past, has really helped the city, is we want to do a few floodplain buyouts. And look at a few properties that are, that were significantly affected by the most recent floods. And, uh, we'll probably bring you a list of those, and then we'll probably go into executive session and provide Kelly some, uh, authority to go speak with some people about floodplain buyouts. But we'll have a whole list of other ones for you, because those will be, those grant applications will be approved by this body, but we have a good list already started. We wanted to be on the ball and ahead of the game.
Going back to that, do we gotta get council members up to date on NIMs, so we are certified for federal dollars?
Yes, we should be updated on NIMs.
Just throwing that out there.
It's fun, you'll love it, I did it. It's a great time, you'll really enjoy it.
That's very important.
We do need to get people updated on NIMs and, um, probably since we have so many council members that need to do, probably we'll do like a class version of it versus independent study. National Incident Management System.
How long does it take?
All day.
All, a long time. It took me a whole morning to do one of them, and there's at least two or three.
Is it like a computer module?
It is, so, um, not entirely intuitive, they change all the time, so that'll be fun. And then we have a bunch of staff as well, that, new staff that need to come online and, and learn how that system works, especially as we operate a utility. I don't mean to keep yammering, but just noting, you know, some of the changes we're working on with new staff members. We also, uh, are continuing to evaluate and look at different things that we can do to, to incentivize and stimulate our rec programming. And so the first big one that Adam took on was soccer this year for the spring. Uh, we changed the way that we do a lot of, uh, uniforms and the jerseys now. And we also, for the first time, we did a clinic to start it off, and we think we're gonna do this with all sports as we progress forward. We did a clinic day with parents and we informed the parents while the kids went with Concordia's entire soccer teams. And they did a great all-day-long thing with different grade levels and stuff, uh, to organize and kind of kick things off and make everybody familiar with what we do and then get started after that. And that was very successful, we heard a lot of good positive feedback. And so we'll continue to analyze those, work with the parks and rec board, and try to just make fine little tune tweaks to continue to update rec programming. And that was led by, by Adam, who's our recent hire back in the summer.
Great. Any questions for Greg? Seeing none, you can make a motion to accept this report. Motion and second, please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Are there any future requests for council agenda items or amended actions? Seeing none?
I would just, just note as a follow-up on one, sorry. I'm sorry. Councilmember Beck had one in regards to a study of, uh, some of the middle school pedestrian traffic up there, and Jake is working on that issue, so it will come back up.
Thank you. Upcoming events?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we have our business anniversary luncheon, we actually have ninety people registered, we're celebrating thirty-eight businesses. If you still want to come and join us, we'll be at the library this year, so lots of excitement to celebrate across the county. Cleanup Day is on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, please tell your constituents about that. That Quanis is helping take the lead, and we're, I'm helping on the marketing side. And then, of course, the Ag banquet got rescheduled to Monday, the twenty-ninth, so please mark your calendars for that if you'd like to join us. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jonathan. Unless there's any other announcements, I didn't hear a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second. Your motion and second, please register your votes. Please spread the votes.